Good afternoon, welcome. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, January 3rd. Welcome to a new year. First on our agenda this evening, we have a presentation from students with Venture Academics. Are you ready? Okay, perfect.
Give you a little context for this. My name is Alyssa McDowell and I'm the Venture Academics Partnership Coordinator. And we also have a couple other staff here. We have Mark Hutchison, who's the Director of the Program and Director of Teaching and Learning. And then Chelsea Dill is the teacher for this group of students. So the way this project came about, Venture, for a little background, is a project-based learning program. And so our goal is to create connections to our community for these students, so they can learn about different careers and work on projects with local businesses or government organizations. So I also work closely with the Medco staff and attend board meetings. And so I think it was in June, I came to a board meeting and pitched the idea of, you know, are there some organizations or businesses that would be open to coming up with some ideas for projects for students to work on? Kind of gave some parameters of the content areas that students are learning in. And one of those was Behavioral Science, Psychology and Sociology. And Ryan said, you know, we recently did a city survey and it could be interesting to have the students review the data and give us some feedback and some of their ideas looking at that. And so this group of students picked up the survey and there were a couple areas that stood out to them where they felt like maybe there was some ideas or solutions that they could bring to the table. And so we've worked with some different city employees along the way. They've done some interviews of residents and gathered data and they'll be sharing some of that with you. And so this is kind of the culmination of their project, kind of their final presentation. But they'll continue to work on this project through the rest of the school year. The Venture strands, as we call them, are courses run a semester in length. So they're wrapping that up. Next week is finals. But then they will continue to work and make connections in the community going forward. So I'm really grateful for the opportunity to be able to work on this project and for Ryan partnering with us and other city staff as well. So I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to the students now and they'll introduce themselves and share a little bit about their project. And we'll actually have two groups presenting tonight. And so the first one is they're going to share about mental health. And the second group is going to share about community engagement through social media.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi, welcome.
So what we'd like from you guys as an audience would be engagement while representing, along with participation or any feedback you may have for us, and then any areas of concern while we're presenting.
Okay, and just one suggestion, whoever's speaking, if you can be close to the mic, because these meetings are recorded for public record and so we would want to have whatever dialogue there is to be recorded. Thank you.
Okay, so my name is Maya Dengahagan.
I'm Kaylee S. Morgan.
I'm Reagan Casey.
And I'm Maya Havenor.
And like Ms. McDowell said, we're four junior girls at Linmart that are enrolled in Venture Academics. And in Venture, we use our skills of rhetoric and problem solving to create a STEM project, which is using our skills to help solve a problem that we care about in the community.
Okay, my personal experience to mental health is at a young age, my sister's best friend Tanner went missing one night. His grandma came to our house looking for him, but he was not there. Later that night, the cops were called and later that night, we found out Tanner had committed suicide. This is something my family and I still struggle with even 10 years later.
So we looked at the Marion survey that was sent out to most of the community. And we found that 43% of the community said that the mental health care was adequate. But that leaves 57% of the community saying that it's inadequate. So this is some of the data that we found while collecting interviews. As a group, we took a total of 32 interviews. And on the side, we have a bar graph up there with some of our numbers. And we found that 25 people said that they were impacted by mental illness. And then 21 people said that anyone can be impacted by mental illness. Oh, I'm sorry, 21 people said only teenagers can be impacted by mental illness. 11 people said that anyone can be impacted by mental illness. And then 30 people said that the mental health care in Marion was inadequate. We also found that there's a big stigma right now surrounding mental illness, where only teenagers or young adults are struggling with it, when in reality, it's people of all ages.
So like Keely said, there were some problem themes that we saw, which were inconsistent mental health care like in the area in itself. And then the stigma that only teenagers and young adults are impacted. Also, just little access in town to the resources that we have. So some existing resources in Marion are Covenant Family Solutions, as well as Marion Family Counseling.
And some of the resources in Marion that have closed are Inner Resources Counseling and Hardened Solutions moved to Cedar Rapids. But not everyone can always go there and get access in other studies.
So some value propositions seems that we found where that there would be reduced mental illness inside the Marion community. There would also be a more engaged community and people would feel connected and more happy as a whole. People will feel less alone because they can lean on each other and they can have someone to talk to. There'll also be a safer community, along with more business opportunities for counselors or psychiatrists.
And so our solution for this was to create an awareness campaign where we could provide information to people and maybe create a bookstand for the library or a calendar of events where we had mindfulness activities at businesses or local parks. And so for the bookstand, we created a prototype over there. And on the top is kids' books and on the middle is themed and then bottom is adult. And these are all just books that could help with mindfulness. And we met with Eileen. We are potentially going to have a event for this. And for the calendar, we just have some events that we could potentially have.
Did you just say the calendar is just examples of events you could have?
Yeah, we took some from the actual calendar, but most of them are just ones that we came up with.
Okay.
So some of our key partners we have is Mrs. McDowell, Mrs. Tejan. They have helped us reach out to different programs like Foundation Two and then the Big Oak Program. And then they also help us write emails to them. Mrs. Dill is our head teacher. She has helped us provide any information we may need for the project, as well as pushing us to our best ability during this. And then Mr. Hutchison is also one of our leaders and he has helped us with the funding for our bookstand.
And Kylie is another one of our key partners and she's helping set up a mental health promotion in the library. Is also helping us reach out to Foundation Two. Brian is another key partner who is allowing us to put our mental health stand in our school library.
And so the people that would be affected by this are individuals impacted by mental illness, whether it be themselves, their family or their friends, also those who are uneducated about mental illness. We would hope to spread awareness to them about mental illness. This could also impact the schools when we have the stand in there and also community members with the one in the library.
So some of our customer channels are, we plan on reaching out to them by sending emails along with setting up any interviews with them. And then we also advertise through our key partners. For example, the Marion Library, as we said before, we're holding the mental health event for all the community to come together. So that would be more advertisement for a bookstand or like any of the mental health offices in Marion that can get the word out. And then with our bookstands, also self-service. So anyone who wants to grab like a business card or pamphlet for different resources are able to take it themselves and then find any information they may need. And then some of our progress is we met with Medco and they gave us great feedback for our slides. And then we also met with the Marion Library and we planned to add our prototype over there, the bookstand in there during the month of May, which is also when we are holding our event. And then we also created the calendar that you have in front of you with different events on it. We have some that we made ourselves and then some that also came from the Marion calendar that was already created. And then we met with the Limmar Library to put the bookstand in there for the students to have as resources.
And then some of our next steps, we're reaching out to Foundation Two and the Green Bandana Project, as well as the Big O Foundation and I'm glad you stayed project, excuse me. And then we're planning, obviously like Katie said, the promotional event for the library, where we would have stands for these foundations, like the Foundation Two and Big O Foundation. And people can come and take resources that they need from those stands or ask questions if they need. And yeah, and then there would be some reaching out to public businesses to show our prototype calendar for wellness and mental health as well. So any questions that you guys may have for us or feedback?
Thank you. I'm sure we have some feedback. Questions, anyone? Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, you know, it sounds like you're trying to go through kind of an educational mental health awareness process for the entire community. Is that, am I hearing that correct? Okay, so that's a major challenge. I mean, when you're trying to do a community-wide and I understand why you try to do that. You've got a segment, a population, obviously that's much closer to home, which is the kids in the high school. You know, more in your age bracket, which also has, you know, a serious challenge as well. Is it easier to try to bite off a segment of that? Or do you feel it's more beneficial trying to tackle this on a community-wide basis?
Well, I feel like because there's like the stigma that only teenagers have it, like mental illness problems or things like that. I feel like by trying to get it out to the community, we can make it, we can de-stigmatize the idea of that and like have it more available to anybody. And like by having in the library, it's easier for anybody to go and access it. And there's no stigma around going to the library and things like that.
So you're trying to really go at it from the standpoint of educating and increasing the awareness of it for all age levels and then doing that on a community-wide basis?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Grant, go ahead.
Well, as I listened to your presentation, some core elements of project management really were evident to me. And as I was in project management for a number of years throughout my professional career. I mean, you very clearly stated a value proposition, which is analogous to objectives, project objectives. You identified stakeholders and you created a network to work across those stakeholders. You validated the necessity for your project. And which I think is very good, because frequently if you get negative feedback on a validation, that helps you refine really what you're trying to get done within the confines of the project. And then you defined some solutions and you developed prototypes, which then you are deploying into your constituency. And then finally, you identified some next steps, some continued actions that help refine the work that others might pick up and do in order to continue what your core objectives were. So what I took away from this was a very organized and structured approach, applying some project management principles to try to define and solve critical problems in our community. And so I just was impressed with that.
Thank you.
Well, let go ahead.
Nice work ladies. It's sort of hard to get up there in front of us, isn't it? It's been a nice job. I just, I want a quick comment. What I appreciated about this, and I think one of you ladies just made a comment, was this idea of de-stigmatizing it. Suddenly I can hear the word out, but this idea of, you know, something that's really important to our community is to be inclusive. And this is a way in which we can be inclusive, right? Everybody struggles with mental illness at some point in time. So how do we make that resource available and accessible, which speaks to that idea of inclusivity? So appreciate your work on this. Nice job.
Just one, go ahead. Yeah, just one more comment. I think you're trying to find a way and how do you reach as many people as possible? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, you got a message. You want to reach as many people as possible throughout the entire community. Well, the city has a quarterly newsletter that goes to every household in Marion. Now, I can't reserve you any room for that, but I think your group ought to make a pitch to maybe reserve some space in there on a well-written piece about your efforts, what you're trying to do and some of the additional resources that'll be available out there. So anyway, just a suggestion.
Thank you for the idea.
City manager?
If I can add on to that. One of the things that when we asked to participate in this program, it was taking a look from the perspective of, this is our community survey data. And what are ways that we can make sure we're engaging with all of our residents? Not just those that vote or pay taxes. And through this effort, this helps create awareness for us too. So to Councilman Jensen's point, as we think about our marketing efforts, this is something that, I mean, they went through the community survey and identified those parts that jumped out to them and spoke to them. So that helps bring awareness to us on our efforts moving forward. So Councilman Jensen's point is spot on that, you know, if there's ways that we can help partner to create the awareness. And I think the awareness is the first step, so.
Well, I applaud you for taking on this topic and this project. So thank you for wanting to work with the city to help inform us. My question is, is there an end point to this project or is it ongoing? Are you doing something? Because you're obviously going to be at some point graduating. Is this a limited-time project or are you working to make it ongoing?
I'm sure we could make it like as ongoing as like we wanted to, like we could always have like the school maybe like, take like teenagers that want to kind of continue a project and keep it going. But I think our idea was to like have this stand at the library or at like our school library or obviously like just give ideas to like businesses near like Marion, obviously. So like the library, they could have the stand and then like if, after we graduate or after we're not like in control of the stand anymore or anything like that, they could like just replace the books or just keep putting like new resources for the area on the standard.
Okay, so at some point, it would be self-perpetuating somehow through the library or the school?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, hi. Thank you for your time today. We're going to start out with.
You didn't introduce yourselves.
Stand closer.
No, introduce yourselves.
Yes, yes, I'm getting to that. Don't worry. I got it. Okay, sorry.
I need to be more patient. All right.
Okay, so we are Venture Behavioral Sciences strand at Linmart. We are a group of seniors and juniors and we work with psychology and sociology. So that is our main focus with this project. And here's our project team. My name is Avery and this is Jasmine. And Jack and Ella could not make it today, unfortunately.
So quick questions. This slide might be more focused towards you guys because you guys obviously work here. But how many of you guys live in Marion? Just by a show of hands?
We have to.
Yeah.
I was thinking about that. And how many of you guys haven't attended or an event hosted by the city of Marion the past year? Yeah, yeah, all right. So what is the problem? So according to the Marion survey conducted in 2022, we saw that 56% of the 833 individuals felt like they were engaged in the community. But this leaves approximately 44% of the people feeling disengaged in the community. And we decided to target this as our issue. And even though only people 18 and above were like included in this survey, it relates to us as individuals as well, like personally. I have friends that live in Robbins and Cedar Rapids and we always end up going to events in Robbins or Cedar Rapids because we don't really hear of anything going on in Marion. So we decided that this might be a good issue to target because of our personal connections to it. So who would benefit by our solution is individual citizens. With increased socialization, it would boost mental health. So mental health in Marion would improve overall. Business owners would benefit because with increased engagement, local businesses would get more customers, therefore increasing revenue. And then city leaders would also benefit because happier citizens lead to increased participation, leading to tourism, economic growth and overall voter support. And this is just a never-ending feedback loop, just going in the cycle. So our solution is to diversify. So by modernizing marketing techniques, by utilizing social media, we will be targeting different demographics on different platforms and appealing to target audiences. So this is the current social media presence of what we found. The city of Marion has a Twitter account. If you can look closely, I know it's a little bit small up there. It only has five likes. So it doesn't show that much participation. And then there's also the city of Marion Facebook account, which has 8,000 followers, which shows that it gets a lot of involvement. But younger audiences tend to not be on Facebook as much, according to our research. So it might not be targeting those younger audiences.
Okay, so what are we doing? We're going to be expanding the city of Marion's social media presence to Instagram. This will target a younger audience, like we mentioned before. We have partnered with Marion's Communication Manager to try and get this up and running. Something else that we have been doing is partnering with Goldfinch Tap and Eatery to create a prototype video of what we would like the social media page to consist of. And because Marion has so many ongoing events already, it is really important for us to make sure that we are advertising these already existing events as well. But we also believe that quality is more important than quantity. So what we want to do is post more quality content, maybe twice a week, rather than less quality content more frequently over the week. And we think this will help the Instagram account be more successful. So we have a couple examples up here of our prototypes. So through these, we would like to include local businesses. Like I said, Marion hosted events, also public spaces that we have. And this was shown in the previous slide with our alley. So what is the value? So social media connects people and although we can utilize social media to market, it is also really important that we're connecting people through our social media. Another thing is tourism, something that can go over someone's head is just posting, hey, I'm at this cafe in this town. Someone sees that, they see the town and they're like, hey, I'm going to that town or I'm going out of state to that state soon. And they actually end up going just because they see a pretty picture on their phone. And this boosts economy, bringing in locals and outside people, and this helps small businesses. This can make residents happier because everyone wants to feel included in their community and have fun with their friends and family outside of their house. And this would just bring people together to be more included and involved and bring in more cultures and age ranges, not just young people, not just older people, but everyone in between.
Okay, so as Avery already alluded to earlier, we did have several partners in our process of this project. We partnered with Goldfinch Tap and Eatery, which is a small business and right near here, actually. And they assisted us with making a prototype social media post, which was a little video. We partnered with Medco and they acted as a focus group for us. So we were able to give this presentation to them and just get feedback before we came to the big leagues, you know? We also partnered with the city of Marion for, they are assisting us in creating a social media account. And as a part of that, Amber Bissinger, who's a social media director for Marion, and Amber has agreed to help us achieve our goals and to start up an Instagram page.
So through our interviews, we did a total of 31. 20 out of the 31 felt as though they were not engaged in the community. And 13 out of 16 people aged 13 to 20 did not feel engaged as well. And for our older, maybe like Gen X or that kind of generation, the 16 people that were aged 46 to 62, half of them actually did not feel engaged. And younger people want to be engaged, but they feel as though they're not. And that's why right now, we really want that to be our target audience of age 13 to 20.
So these are some interview quotes that we took from interviews that we took with people that live in Marion. And these are what some of your citizens have to say about the engagement in Marion. So I never hear about events going on in Marion unless it's through school. I notice how there isn't really big community activities like those I have participated in in Robbins or Cedar Rapids. And also, I'm not very involved in the community because I don't know anything about community events.
So the goal of this project is not to bring in revenue, but it is an added benefit. So Marion does hold events that involves local businesses. And we've seen this with the Peppermint Walker Christmas in the Park. I know personally, I was working at Goldfinch that night and we were super busy and it brought in so many customers and obviously revenue. And I know a lot of businesses in Marion Square were super busy as well. So this just like boosts overall revenue for everyone around. Yeah, and then so another thing that is really great about this project is that the Communications Manager already exists for Marion, the position does. So no added funds or extra costs would be needed to fuel this.
So thank you.
Next steps. Next steps. Um, so we would like to work with more local businesses to create more prototypes and videos to post on the Instagram page. If you would like to see the prototype that we created with Goldfinch, you can touch base with us or send us an email or to Mrs. McDowell and we can get that sent over to you. And we just want to show off like the business itself, like services and products that they provide, just a space, if it's like pretty or whatever. And employees or owners, like just to get to know who is actually owning this place or who is actually working at this place. And then another goal of ours would be for this to continue after we graduate or we leave Venture. And we would do this by starting an internship with Marion and the Marion High School and Linmart High School. This would be where kids interested in marketing or social media could get involved and continue creating content for you. So it would go way beyond just us. And then another idea or possibility could be a content competition. This would probably be anyone in the community of all age ranges. They'd be able to go into the community, go and take pictures or videos and do what they want and then submit it. You could have a theme, most informative, most creative, most historical. Whoever like has the best content gets to have it featured on the Instagram page. And that would just kind of be a fun activity for the whole community to get involved and have a say in like what goes on the city of Marion page. Thank you.
Any questions, comments or concerns?
Good job. Anyone? Go ahead, Sarah.
Great job. And again, big, big topic to tackle and one that has been a topic in this communication for quite some time. Out of curiosity, so I'll preface this by saying I have three young adult children. Okay, so and I've kind of asked them and I don't get much of an answer. So I'm asking you all, as you look through this and you develop the social media platforms and we look at people being involved or quotes from kids, like I don't know, things are going on. What makes them show up? Like, is it the pretty pictures or is it the, like what at an event that the community does, says to a high school student or a college student or a young adult, hey, my friends, we're going to go to that event? Is it, what is the draw that helps us to sell something on a great Instagram page?
Okay, so I was the person that really looked into this, looking at demographics, analytics. And I saw that for the younger generations such as myself, they really appeal, things that appeal to them involve humor. So taking like a funny video, like we did our prototype with Goldfinch, as we mentioned earlier. And it was just kind of like a cool walkthrough, very reminiscent of other things that happened, like videos that are posted marketed towards like younger generations such as ourselves. So we're just kind of taking inspiration from that and just directing it towards like populations within Marion.
If you're talking about specific events, I feel like a lot of the things that were said in our interviews were farmers markets, things having to do with art or like just getting out and just being able to like shop or look around. And I know one that is more popular for like younger, younger kids is definitely like the Christmas in the park or the peppermint walk. And then you have like the chocolate walk where there's like, for sure, is alcohol involved with that one? So it's like, it just really depends, but I feel like with the younger ones, it's definitely just like the farmers markets, art galleries, stuff like that, that we do in Marion Square.
Is there a gap of what we're not providing?
Um, so I would say that most people feel like there aren't enough events for teens, but I feel like the bigger disconnect is that they're there, they just don't know about them. And that's kind of what we're trying to get at here. And that's kind of what we're trying to get at here is that you guys have a very full calendar of very fun events and people just don't know about them.
Like, for example, when we were doing research on this, our um original project focus was to get more events going on in Marion to increase community engagement. And then we looked it up and we're like, wow, there are events. We just had no clue. So that's where we kind of pivoted and uh we came to this.
Well, good job on that, on the pivot. Um when you look at that and you realize, because that's that's a good life skill right there to be able to see where you're going and realizing that maybe there's a different direction that's that's helpful on it. One follow up question, um and then I'll see if my colleagues have any others. Is there a um, is there a, is there a next, is there a benchmark later to see? And this kind of goes to maybe even the other group as well. Is um down the road for progress or, you know, what's that um reassessment? It is it a year? Is it six months? Is it, is is there a follow up piece that is then lived within the program that that comes back to? Or is that something that comes to the city to um to look at next?
So you're saying like the number turnout is what?
Like, um, uh, yes, if you want to look back and say then this project was a success, I know. Grant tells our project manager down here, but if this, this was a, our work was a success. Like in six months, we were able to gain this amount of followers or this amount of content or attendances increasing at these or our, we're going to go back and talk to people we talked to before and see if their opinion has changed on that. Is that a part of this timeline project or not? Or is that something that lives with the next person who takes this on?
Um, so I feel like it'll be pretty easy to benchmark for our project in particular because we'll be able to see as followers increase, just uh looking at the rate of that rate of change. And then also with the businesses that we're partnering with, we can ask them like with our advertisement of their businesses, of their events, are they seeing that increased revenue like compared to like prior events, prior years, such like like that?
I would say it'd be both. It'd probably be immediate on social media where you can see I got fifteen likes on this, but I got three hundred likes on this. So I think you could tell really immediately on social media, but it might take some time for events like farmers markets or not till like the summer. So that would be something that would have to be weighted on a little bit, for sure.
A great job.
Thank you.
Randy?
Oh, thank you. I don't even know where to begin on this. I just feel like I jumped on my parents' skin here because I hear you talked about Twitter and all I wanted to do was talk about Elon Musk a little bit here. But um I'm gonna throw some things around that I don't even know a lot about, but you're triggering a bunch of things like um Twitter, TikTok, right? How do we? How do we, how do we engage? I I'm just enthralled with the idea. Why do you want to do this? Why does your generation, why are you here tonight? I'm curious to know from you two, what's making you engage in this? Because I'm really intrigued by your generation that is before the city council here tonight.
Um, I just feel like we didn't know that much and we just wanted to know more. Um like personally, after we partnered with Goldfinch, I ended up going there and attending their live music night. So it was just like, wow, this is so cool. And I had no clue that this existed. So and I know some of my friends, I've been telling them about Goldfinch as well. And then we're all like gonna end up going there sometime soon. So it's just kind of like fun things that we didn't know were happening.
I think for me personally, I lived in Marion like all my life. And I uh work at Zoe's Pizzeria as well as Goldfinch. So I work kind of in Marion Square. I know it like the back of my hand. I'm always here every night. So it's just like really important for me, like I know what's going on because I see the flyers like hanging up at like like a restaurant, maybe on like the little bulletin board that only the staff can see. But um other than that, I feel like it's really important that like my friends and I, we have something that we can go to and we can enjoy. Like a Marion by Moonlight, like that was something that was newer for me this year. And I think that they've held it for multiple years, but I just went this year and I was like, wow, that's really great that I can do that in Marion and not have to go outside of Marion to do some of those things.
Great, that's exciting. Thank you. It would sure be nice if Marion moved up the ranks there and became number one in the Cedar Rapids, Robbins area, Iowa, right? So that's great. Well, kudos to you.
In the Marion metro area.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. Thank you for what you're doing.
Anyone else? Ben, go ahead.
Well, you know, um, one of the things on your next steps uh about the idea of having internships at uh both of the high schools. Um, and so your platform that you you're wanting to get uh put in place is Instagram, right?
Yes.
Um, so and that's, that's the preferred platform for your, your uh your peers at this point? Okay, um, so one of the things that just occurred to me, and this kind of goes along the line of uh promote the promotion. If you have peers who are in an internship to help create content delivered through Instagram, m- making a big deal that your friend, let's say it's Joe and Elizabeth, created this for a business, just the word that they did that and get and and share that, promote the promotion, promote the promoters, that's probably also going to drive interest in the variety of events that you all are targeting for this, this kind of a um, this kind of a campaign. But I too, along with uh my colleagues, I want to congratulate you for this because um just your analysis and your solution set that you you were proposing is really going to help um make, make it more visible of the good things happening in Marion. So thank you.
Right, yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, my turn. Uh, this is a topic that's near and dear to my heart, as everybody knows. You know, when I I speak at schools a lot and talk to young people a lot. And first thing I say to them is our goal is to make this a place where you are proud to have grown up and and uh where wherever you end up on in your life, you say you're proud to live in Marion and um and have a lot of good things to say about growing up here and about our city. So um and we've been working hard at that. One of the things that I started a number of years ago is a youth council, which includes uh students from both high schools. I'd love to have you involved in the youth council. But um that that was one of the, one of the reasons was to have students have have more opportunities for engagement. But this is, I think, the next step, which is have them be more involved in community life. And so this, this, this really helps, I think, uh in informing me, informing Amber, who works directly with me on the youth council, um to um uh work on that next step. And uh if you uh wanted to be involved with that part of it and helping the youth council to uh fi- uh figure out how to get the information out to the, to their peers. Because that was our, that's our goal, was to to have them be informed about what's going on, to learn about the city, to learn about what we're working on, all the things that are available here. Um as and then to go out and share that with with your peers. Uh I think you're absolutely right that uh Facebook is not the right uh place to reach uh people of your age, age group. So uh we need to be reaching them in the, in the way that uh where where they are interacting and where they are active, which um uh you're you're already suggesting. So um this is all great and you've done a great job and uh really appreciate the work you've put into it and uh look forward to seeing the results. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Mayor, let's go ahead.
I just wanted to, I apologize. I, I didn't know exactly what I wanted to say, but I wanted to bring it back up. The previous group, uh you ladies that were talking about um mental health. That is a huge topic and I hope and I I really look forward to seeing where you drive this because I as a, as a professional in the daytime, I work with a lot of people all the way from high school graduates all the way up to senior citizens. And so we see a lot of um um mental illness that's her, that centers around um holidays, seasons, days of the week, months of the year. Um so to see those types of things get back out into the community and this calendar, my brain has just been washed with um a bunch of thoughts, a bunch of things that center around mental illness and where that goes. We know that suicides uh are up. Uh we know, you know, where some of those things lie. Um I'm very, I'm very passionate about watching this group uh focus around that. And so as we take a look at, you know, children that are being bullied in school and a lot of things that are going on on the social media platforms, these are all super exciting topics. And uh I will for one be watching this very closely and thank you for what you're doing. It's, it's going to bring this out because I always feel like we shouldn't be reactive as more, as more we should be proactive. And rather than be following, we should be leaving. And if we can push and pull some of these topics at your level and bring them in, we deal with people that are um dealing with on stages of um dementia, Alzheimer's. Those are, those are tough topics for people. Um, they know where they're headed. Um and so that becomes very difficult, very challenging. So anyway, I didn't want to spin this exciting spin around, but I wanted you to know that um it's, this is very encouraging to see this type of stuff come forward. So thank you.
Anyone else? And if you, if you're just open to a, just one um constructive feedback uh item, several places in your presentation, you used the word uh citizen. You might consider uh using the word resident instead because it's more inclusive and I'm sure that's your intention. So um it's just a, a word we've been trying to use more um at the city level also to make sure that uh everyone feels included, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Great job, everyone. And thanks to all the adults who are invested in this program. Thank you. Okay, are are we on to the next item, Ryan?
We are.
Okay.
Um, go ahead. Thank you, Mayor. Um really quick, the other, the nice part about um having um our, our high schoolers join us today is to, they get to access their government and understand that you all are elected uh to help them as well and that this is a pretty painless process to come up and talk to your elected officials. So thank you. And so the next item on the agenda was discussion direction regarding the former uh Marion Public Library site. We've had several conversations with the council in appropriate settings uh over the last year about this site. As everybody recalls, uh the derecho unfortunately came through and wreaked havoc on our community. And uh this site was one that was significantly damaged. Um now that we have our new library up and operational, we're excited about that. But um recently we did, uh we had our code enforcement staff do a walkthrough to assess the damage. Um and actually, when we were um having a conversation with council in closed session about this, uh we, we had a pipe burst. Um so the, 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 the site is um not inhabitable uh as, as we've talked about in the past. And and so on Thursday at the council meeting, we're going to be asking for a direction, uh two, two forms of direction uh from the council. Um the first is um we're going to ask direction to proceed with uh the central corridor review process, which this site is um within that, that um geographical boundary. Um so it is subject to that provisions of the code. And then the other uh section, the other direction that we're going to be requesting from council is to concurrently with that review process, uh prepare and seek bids for the demolition of that facility. Even with the direction, I just want to be clear that we can go out, we can secure um pricing, but the count, it's obviously up to the council to make that final determination whether or not to award. Um so even if you do provide us with direction, um that's not, uh it's not a guarantee that that's what's going to happen. Um we do ask that this be done concurrently to take advantage of what would be a favorable uh bidding process for demolition. Um we do have a timeline. Um I can let Dave speak to this if you for the review processes, we've kind of mapped it out.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be a pretty quick, this is a pretty quick process. The central corridor is really just designed, it's, it stretches really from McDonald's all the way out to uh Walmart, more or less. So it covers all of Seventh Avenue portions of Sixth and Eighth Avenues. It is just outside the historic district boundary, but we do take that to the commission because it's immediately adjacent, just so they're aware. So anytime you alter a structure, like take a tower off or um put a tower on or demolish a property, it does change the character of the property. Uh so it will go through the process. Like I said, it'll look at February if we get direction on Thursday to proceed um to both the commission and uh both commissions planning and historic. And then they make recommendations to the city council. What they're going to be looking at basically is how's the property going to be left? We're obviously not digging a hole and just leaving it. Uh we'd be seating it or sodding it or whatever, leaving the parking lot, I assume, for most of the parking lot. We do send out a notification, probably about five hundred feet, uh because demolition of this size does change the neighborhood for a little while in terms of access, dust control if it gets into the summer. Uh so we like to make all those folks aware and they can obviously come and speak their, their mind about it as well. So it's in a pretty open and transparent process that allows the, the public to have some input.
Okay. Just, do you want questions or any questions? Grant, go ahead.
So um the review process running in parallel with uh gaining um or going out for uh quotations for the demolition, how long would it take us to get those uh those bids in, start to finish? What I'm trying to understand is, is how does that mesh with this timeline instead of milestones?
So it'll take staff a little while to get the plan documents put together. I mean, it, it doesn't take as much as say a street reconstruction versus a demo project, but we'll have to put those together and we'll want it out for about a, a month to get contractors time to, to look at it and get those bids back to us. Um so even with that, I mean, if I told the staff, go on Thursday, they still need a little time to, to get that put together. Um and then give the contractors time to evaluate it. We'll have to do um walkthroughs with them because they'll want to look and see if, is there steel or stuff in there that's salvageable that they'll incorporate into their bid.
Okay, all right. So the other question that I just have is, um is there anything about the, the building at this point that presents to us an, an elevated risk that suggests we should move faster rather than slower?
You, Chief or Gary, would you like to speak on that?
Yeah, so we've had the, the building posted uh as uninhabitable based on the systems, uh the electrical system. The utilities uh are no longer present at the site itself. And so we've identified that uh it is not safe for people to be in the building and that's why it's been posted. Gary, did you want to add some additional to that?
So the, the outside of the building, the building is not in danger of falling down. But there is items on the outside of the building that with the right weather conditions, wind and such, that could blow um pieces and parts off the building that could injure people passing by. I don't know what the odds of that are, but it could happen. So that's, that's really the biggest danger. The, the windows that were broke have been boarded up, so they're okay. So it's, that's really the, the extent of the risk to the public. Could be, you know, if we have the right wind event and somebody's coming by, we have something blow off the building, so. There are items that are not secure on the outside of the building.
Thank you. I mean, overall, it seems to me the reason to want to move this quicker than slower is simply because if we can get, move these in a parallel path and get these bids in a timely manner, this can be a winner project for somebody that is going to get them ahead of their construction season. So we can catch somebody in their slower time before the April, May construction season kicks off, maybe get this done in their slow time and get it done more efficiently, more effectively, and maybe with a better price.
That's correct. Yeah, um several months ago, when we had a conversation with council about this, uh engineering did some preliminary estimates, uh talked to a local uh construction company. And the, the pricing that we got at that time was, was um pretty high. Um so we do think that this timeframe will help us uh capitalize on some of the slower parts of the construction season, hopefully. Um and then uh make our, our taxpayer dollars uh go further.
Yeah. Anyone else? Yeah, oh, go ahead.
No, on the chart, since February twenty third, city council, so that's coming back to council to approve a uh demolition package?
No, that would actually approve, that would just be the approval, approving the demolition to the central corridor review uh process. Um the demolition would be a separate item uh when you get the bids and Mike would present that at that time.
We didn't want to be presumptuous.
It could, it could conceivably be on the twenty third, uh right after the central corridor review process is approved.
Okay.
Thank you. The other thing too is once, once we get clarity on this, this site, that allows us then to transition to working with the council on what to do in the future for that site as we continue the Renaissance of the uptown.
So what's the direction you're looking for? Are you looking for just a sense that there's no extreme opposition to this?
So on Thursday, the direction, you'll have a motion, you'll have two motions on the, I think it's, we're going to have one motion directing us to commence the, the, the central corridor review process and directing staff to Commence the, the, the central quarter review process and directing staff to prepare the bid package for the demolition of that site.
Okay. Is that clear for everybody? Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is discussion of the agenda for January 5th meeting. We can turn to the agenda. No items are marked for discussion prior to item E8 on page five. Are there any of those items that need to be discussed? Okay, then we'll go to E8. We have Mr. Barcalo.
Yes, Your Honor. So E8 in your council packet is the actual letter from FEMA. So I know it feels like we just did this. We did two years ago. They decided that they wanted to remap only Indian Creek and not Wanta T or formerly known as Squaw Creek. So this only does those map panels that affect Indian Creek. So that's what this letter is notifying the public of. So it's directed to the mayor and myself. They did put it in the Gazette and the legal, but I don't know how many people actually lead, read the legal. So our, our next item, we're going to notify the. The public. So this is the, the letter that basically outlines the, the FEMA map that's going to get changed. So if there's any questions on this one, then we'll proceed to the next item.
Go ahead, Grant.
So what was the. Physical. Or topographical change that. Increased, or I should say changed the flooding prediction?
Their main thing was the rate of intensity of the rainfall events. So what they do is they just use their, what are the, the last hundred years of that? And as you know, our most recent storm events have been larger. So by adding those into the equation. And that's what we'll talk about when I notify the, the residents on the next item. But wouldn't the BFF year, the base flood elevation raises by three feet? That's a significant impact.
Right. So I, I picked up on the, was there a change in the evaluation of the one bridge that goes over Indian Creek on Albernett Road?
So if we can wait till the next item, I'll get into some details.
Okay, okay. Sorry.
So Mike, this does not include Dry Creek, that's just Indian Creek.
Correct. So it does go up Dry Creek just a little bit until it matches in. So there's kind of like a tapering. But like Bowman Meadows, the, the Skogman Development, it, it doesn't quite get into that. So it's just a little bit until it, it ties in, but it's only Indian Creek that they said the study on.
Okay, but it would like the area. And so my mind was thinking Creekside Pride and the potential for the pond back in that area. So it would be up in that area.
Yeah, and we can show you some of the lengths and stuff that we have. You can click on it, you can see where the map actually changes and stuff, just like the residents are going to get.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Next item.
All right. So the next one is because it's only in the, the literature that no one reads, we would like to, like we have in the past. Notify all the residents. So what we did last time was, this is the note card that we sent out. This would be, go to anyone that it affects. So anywhere that's, that's flood boundary in Indian Creek touches, I think before it was like 600 of the entire city. But this is only Indian Creek. So it's about 420 residents. Some are duplicates and some are the city, so we won't notify ourselves. But we would send this postcard out and then Darren Andrews, one assistant city engineer is going to get a lot of phone calls of people very confused. But that way he can walk them through it. Obviously, it's a big change in some areas where we're raising. So in, again, in your council packet, I gave an example of Eighth Avenue next to the water. You can see there it's raising by three feet. That's very significant when the current standards right now are you must build one foot above the base flood elevation. So if you're one foot up, and then all of a sudden they come in, they change the map and raise it three feet, now you're below the base flood elevation. So your insurance is going to go up. So we don't have a choice. We have to adopt the maps. If we don't adopt the maps, people lose their national flood insurance, and so they would have to buy it on the private market instead of the, the national market. And then as we were reviewing the impacts. We also noticed that there was two major things that FEMA did not include or their consultants did not include, and that's why we're also going to start the appeal process to these maps. Those two items are the, it used to be Albernett Road covert that we put in, it's now Central. And so that box covert was permitted. It was not under construction yet at the time when they were doing the map studies, so they forgot about it. But that obviously makes a big impact when we put that box covert into the model. So because they did not include that, it had huge impacts in the, the floodway. So we told them to include that. The other one was the Mooney property. So that would be south of. The New Winslow Road, north of New Future Tower Terrace Road. That area, well, there's actually a fill that was brought in and that area was brought out of the floodplain. And they did not include that either. Again, that was permitted, it was legal. But for some reason, they did not include that with their modeling system. We tried to get them to issue a map with those correct revisions in it, and instead they want us to do it as an appeal. So we'll have to generate that appeal. Also with the notification to all these property owners, if there's an appeal that they want to do as well, we can include that with the appeal that we send to FEMA. So that's why I want to make sure those 420 residents know that they can notify FEMA of the. Issues. So back to, to Grant's questions. So they don't get into too many details of exactly why. Exactly. You know, they do more topographic maps, they get more, and that's kind of what they did last time was they, they kept the model the same. All they did was they use the new LiDAR data. And that changed it a little bit. But now they also looked at what are those, what's that less rainfall events that have happened? And because we've had more recent ones that are higher, it automatically raises that intensity. And so. At some point, they will do the rest of the city, and I'm imagining that's going to happen there as well. So. As we see that happening with. Climate change.
Well, it, so that gets to the basis of my question, which, to use their phraseology, if we were going to have an appeal or make an appeal. It needed to either be on a technical or scientific basis.
Yes.
And, and so. It appears that we have that. That kind of information, that, that caliber of information.
Yeah. And so at least with the, the correspondence that we've had back and forth, basically because we have, we did that information, we applied for the permits the first time, or the consultant did for Tim Mooney for his property. Because we did that, we provided that information, they had that, they could just re-put it in the model. And so rather than. Us having to pay to do that twice, they did at least provide that so that we can include that with our appeal. Just a, a way that we have to go about it, but it, it's not a. It doesn't stop the process, we can still move forward with it.
Steve, Mike, what is the standard timeframe that FEMA normally redoes their maps?
It varies quite a bit. So it was the eighties that we did before the most recent one that we did. So it just varies on how they want to do it. If they have an area that maybe sees a lot of flooding, which was kind of odd that we really haven't had a lot of impacts and why they only did Indian Creek and not Dry Creek and. Wanted Sea Creek. So we're not sure what their logic is. We don't try and understand that. We just have to go with it.
I was going to be, my question is why are they selecting Indian Creek? And you have no idea.
They would not.
Why FEMA does what they do.
Yep. I don't know if it's a die that they roll and decide who they want to pick on. I, I, that I don't know.
So the bottom line of this is a lot of these, there's going to be a number of homes and perhaps some businesses. That are going to go from the 500-year floodplain into the 100-year floodplain.
Yeah, or.
And then if they want flood insurance, then that cost now goes up. Randy? Right?
Yeah, the FEMA puts out a flood chart and they're labeled by letters and the higher the letter, the higher the premium because you're, you know, it's kind of. I don't know if you've ever explained this, but when you talk about a 100-year floodplain, it's basically saying that you have a 1% chance of being in a flood. In that period of time. So when we talk about 500-year, 100-year, there's an analogy to that whole process, and that's, that's exactly what they're, they're looking at, yeah.
Good work.
Are you going to do some type of open house for all these folks? Or are you just going to do an individual basis?
We're just going to do it on individual basis. It's complex enough that just having an open house, it, it's worked best in the past that when we give them this postcard, we give them this phone number. Darren has his speech down.
So it goes to Darren and I, you, that's the way you're doing that.
Yeah. I mean, some will come in and stuff, but when we do give them a link, they can click on. The, the hard part is though is when they click on the existing map and the proposed map, proposed map isn't quite right because it's not going to include those two things that we're going to appeal. Which doesn't affect too many property owners, but we would have liked to have the, it included in the map, but we couldn't get that pushed through.
If there's a property owner that wants to appeal this, is it, is it all done individually or is it a one lump?
FEMA wants us to have one appeal that has everything in it. So that's the hard part, and it's kind of hard to appeal it unless you have something like that where you have evidence. Again, someone saying. I've lived here 50 years and I've never flooded. Why do I have to pay more? That's where it gets back to that scientific and not just based on feelings.
Is there going to be more than one letter going out? Just?
No, we'll do the postcard, we'll send it out, we'll do a social media post, we'll do, you know, our typical. Notifications, but no, it'll just be one postcard that we send out to the 420. They only have 90 days, and that started on December 22nd. So we don't have time to do multiple notifications.
And then just out of curiosity, just if there's a longstanding drought, does FEMA ever produce?
I've never seen them.
Never seen it go down. Okay. So will they go up if there's big rain events or they go down when there's no rain events?
Because what they do is they're taking the history. So just because one year it was dry and we had a drought, those high years are still there.
I meant like a long drought.
Anyway, the, the way that climate change is changing, I don't think that's going to occur.
Anyone else? Sarah, go ahead.
So the two things that weren't included, those, would the, the impact be across the border? Like if those, if we appeal that and those two pieces are put into that, the mitigation on the, on the Mooney property and the box covert, they don't impact the other properties? That's specifically just for the city or how?
So it, it does completely change the model. So they showed, there's some tables later in that, that process that you can see where it went plus or minus.
Yeah.
And so it showed at each cross-section if it changed it up or down. So it, it wasn't just at those locations, they rerun the entire model based on that. So that's why we were not happy when it wasn't in, included in the original model.
So this could change, this could change on, on appeal again based on, because of, if they include this, we could end up seeing a whole different situation.
Right. So the map that's on FEMA's webpage right now is without the appeal. So when we appeal it, and just like anything, there's a process, then they have to review it. Now it's their consultant that did the appeal basically for us and is giving us the paperwork. So. I don't know that the appeal's not going to be granted. It's just like anything else, it's a process. They could decide not to approve it for some reason. But again, these were permitted prior, but we have to get through their process.
And this may be way too global in the conversation, but do they take into any account? Does this get impacted in any way based on upstream? So if places out of our jurisdiction. And changes or things that they do, can then that impact us positively or negatively based on mitigation work outside of our area?
They do, but they don't take, for example, detention basins into account typically. I mean, if you do something very large, like a reservoir, like that we have down in Iowa City. They would, that would come into play because you're actually damming up the river. But all the small detention basins that we have all over the place, that doesn't even go into the equation.
Those don't, or like the, I'm thinking about all the discussion of like runoff areas or, or the, or grow like plants and different things you could do to slow down. They don't count, they're just not even.
Yeah, they look at topography and rainfall.
Interesting. Okay.
Thank you. For those that are listening to this, I would encourage everyone to go out to FEMA's website on there because you can see a calendar. And it will actually show you in real time, the elevations of the water based on the year. And so you can slide that scale across. You know, back to the beginning of time. I don't know when that was actually put on there, but so you can go from 2008, 2009, 2010, and you can actually see. How that topography map is changing for that. And it's really, really important for people to get engaged and look at this. I live off of. Aggett Circle. And so literally across the street to my house, which would be by Liniger Park. These people will, will all be impacted in, in a flood zone now, where they had not been before. So that does give them diminished resale value to their property. When the lenders come in and say you're going to need flood insurance now, if you want to take a 30-year mortgage out on this property. One of the other things too, I would like to add on this is. There is, there is time to pause and look at this. I have some interest in some property on Lake of the Ozarks. Anybody who knows that lake down there, that flood zone down there is at 790 feet above flood stage. 791 puts the water over the dam. So a lot of people are being forced to purchase flood insurance when in fact it would never flood because it would actually breach the dam at Lake of the Ozarks. So. There is pause to challenge these things and these rulings, and there's nothing. You know, just because it's FEMA, we'd like to say it's as accurate as possible, but I would not discourage people. From, from really challenging some of these things as we take a look at them. We in the insurance industry, we know that the water tables are changing. I've heard people say, my, you know, my sump pump has never run. I've lived in this house for 40 years and it's been dry. The pit, I don't even have a pump in the pit. Now all of a sudden that pump is running twice a day. So the, the elevation and the water tables are changing. So what happens to this is, as the groundwater starts to impede. And fill the ground and saturate it with water, that means that the rivers and the creeks push it out further. And so what flood is flood and it'll just keep creeping forward up into the banks of these properties. So. Flood insurance is even, you know, the hairline cracks in your foundation, any water that comes into your basement from the ground. Is considered to be flood insurance, not the water that comes in the window well from a flash flooding. So. There's a lot of different changes when it comes to this flood insurance and how FEMA regulates that. So. As the grounds get more saturated with water and the water's not being taken away, it does make the ground around these basements. Higher in water content, so they, they're not as able to absorb that water. Like it used to in the past. So I would encourage people to pay attention and get engaged in this because this is a forever change going forward in some of these properties.
Okay. Thank you. You have one more item, Mike?
I do. So the next one, as you may or may not recall, with the ARPA funding, we applied to Lynn County slash Cedar Rapids twice for several projects. They did award us $150,000. We did get it for project seven, which is in the Wanta T Park. It's the area marked in red on your screen. And that's the estimate that's for that project. So we're recommending signing that contract with them.
Okay, questions? Just, just curious, remind us, how much total did we apply for?
It was somewhere between three and five million.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on the next item, which is under community development? It's not marked for discussion. Questions? All right, E1, that's you, Mike.
Yep. So we're still working out the final details. So this may be pulled on Thursday, but this is our construction manager at risk with a guaranteed maximum price for our Plaza project. It took a little while to get through the new documents and contract. Obviously, this is the new method of procuring the project. Renderneck was our chosen contractor for this. But we have been running it through separate legal, our legal and our insurance company. We've gotten all of our comments back to Renderneck for them to review. But they were just given them last week. So we got to let them have time to review and make sure there's nothing that they don't disagree with. Assuming that they can get to it this week, we'll then approve it on Thursday. If not, we'll push it to the next council meeting, but. It's easier to pull it than it is to add it on Thursday. So for now, we're going to leave it. The guaranteed maximum price, we will not know until we get to the final documents. And then what we'll do is an amendment to this contract, and that's when we'll put that guaranteed maximum price in there. So what they'll do. Similar to some of the other projects where their construction manager as advisor, basically, they will help with RDG, put the final documents together. The bid packages put together, similar to how we're just doing public service. And then building those out. And that's when we'll get the guaranteed maximum price when we get all that put together. There's lots of tweaking to happen with the plans yet, because they're only a design development at this point.
Questions? Pretty clear? Okay, the next two items are not marked for discussion. Any questions on those? If not, we'll move to F3, Dave. If not, we'll move to F three, Dave.
On Thursday, there'll be a public hearing regarding the sales of public property highlighted there on the image. It's uh, between Fifth and Sixth Avenue. It's the old seventeenth street uh, right away. It was vacated a few months ago, or at least the south portion was. Um, the applicant, Don Carter, he owns the property to the east, uh, five fifteen seventeenth street. Um, and he has made a request to purchase the entire vacated uh, street. It's thirty three feet by ninety. Um, so it's a substandard street to begin with, not your typical sixty feet wide. As I didn't get, he, he has made the request to purchase the entire, the entire piece. Um, he's had a lot of concerns just how, how he can access his property. He has no direct access onto Fifth Avenue there. And he is seeking to uh, use the entire thirty three feet. Uh, that'll give him ability to have a driveway and uh, some parking. Right now his building is about ten feet from the property line, then the additional thirty three. So he'll have approximately forty three feet to work with. Um, more than he has today. Is it ideal? Uh, no, more is always a little bit better, uh, but it does improve the situation he has out there today. Um, the city council ha- typically. For, for our resolution uh, regarding alley sales and whatnot, um, typically we try to split the property in half. So property owner to the west would get their half. This applicant would get his half, so it's about approximately sixteen and a half. Um, that's typically how it's done. Uh, however, the city council can, if they find a public benefit can. Sell it all to one individual or they can do, say, eight feet to this individual and the balance to the other property owner. You can really divide it up any way you want. Um, as I've looked at this project, we are recommending that the uh. Uh, that the applicant has demonstrated that he needs full use of the property to make his existing property remain viable, functional. Uh, to get ingress and egress to, to his building. Uh, so we are recommending the entire sale of the property in the amount of twenty four hundred and change. Uh, subject to the two items, uh, thirty three foot utilities being maintained, some existing infrastructure in there. It does require um, to be maintained and then a hard surface per the standards of one seventy six point two nine. Uh, to be installed, this arbitrary number, I said, one year could be more, could be less, but I feel one year is enough time to. Allow the individual to put some money aside, secure some financing, whoever he needs to put in a hard surface paving. Uh, he does have the ten feet in front of his garage, but he would need to pave the thirty three feet. The adjacent property owner Genesis Equities, I think is the actual owner. Yes, like, uh, they have uh, reached out to us and have indicated they would like their half. So they would like their sixteen and a half feet. Uh, so again, it comes down to the city council's ultimate decision, how you want to divide this property up. But we are recommending the full use of the property. In the staff report, I did provide uh, the Genesis Equities concept. Hope you all had a chance to see that to the north. Um, they do have a driveway and detention basin on their property. Again, they'd just like to incorporate that additional thirteen, sixteen and a half feet to uh, into their development to. Uh, make it a little easier. Um, but they are, they have proven that they do have access to the property.
Questions? Steve? Yeah, Dave, on the north side of the property we're talking about now, the north side of this alley or street, whatever you want to call it. Has that already been abandoned?
Yes, that was abandoned. Uh, it's in my notes, it's on the top of my head. Um. Twenty nineteen. It was abandoned and, and sold to uh, Genesis Equities.
Okay, so if we look at Genesis, or Genesis already gotten some benefit of abandonment through that street. Okay, so I don't, we, we understand the benefit to the business. I'll have to go back. Maybe I missed that map on what Genesis wants to do with their half. Because they already had plotted out what their project was going to be. Going to the west of this and wasn't that? That they have a, just a, a, a street or a, excuse me, um, entryway from Fifth Avenue. Going into that property.
When you do get a chance, it's, it's in the staff report.
Yeah, I missed that. Yeah.
Can you outline just for the council? The ownership, because most of the parcels surrounding. The, the alley in question and the applicant. Most, all of the remaining parcels around it are owned by Genesis.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so I've never used it. Sorry here. That's what it's going to do. I'm going to do it this way. All right. Um, so this, so the applicant's property is right here today. Subject property is highlighted in red. Um, Genesis has come in and they have purchased. Uh, portions of sixteenth street here. So it's kind of all along the hand. It's the old Emirates site. Then down to the south here. Over behind the applicant and behind the subject property. And then down, they purchased this additional lot directly on the Fifth Avenue, coming back up. Over back up to sixteenth street and then back to the point of beginning. So again, when you do get a chance in the staff report, they do have a driveway in this location. Right here. And then they have a detention basin uh, in the west area. In this area, it's twenty four foot wide driveway, which meets the minimum standards for two way uh, in and out of the, of the development to the north.
Excellent.
Glad reading. So ju- just for clarification one more time, I'm so sorry. But if it's proposed as if it was sold off, no, you see no setbacks, issues or anything for the proposed driveway for Genesis in the future. Is that correct?
No, they, I mean, they have a plan that's been approved, um, actually through the site development plan process uh, through the city council a couple of years ago.
So they.
They, they meet it. They, they've got the, they can ingress and egress from their property with the twenty four foot wide.
So their request though, for that part of that, that old street, is that just to have extra land or are they proposing to move the driveway?
Pads the site. I'm sure they would move the driveway a little bit, maybe increase the detention, not have to go as deep, maybe go. I don't know. It just pads the, pads the math a little bit for their site.
Sure. Thank you. I just was curious if there was an objective to um, obtaining a, a section of that or parcel of it.
Just convenience. It makes it a little easier to develop.
Totally understand. Thank you.
Alright, so this will be a public hearing and uh, we did notify within uh, I think three hundred feet of this property. So there might be some folks here.
Thanks, Dave. Next is S, F five, Kesha.
Hello. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, so F five is going to be the public hearing on Thursday regarding an annexation request for property west of Mulberry Drive, northeast Robins Road. Um, this is an eighty twenty annexation. So again, this is what the state considers a voluntary petition with non consenting property owners. And so, um, as you'll see, the consenting acres we have coming in with petitions signed is thirty two point six four, which is. Over eighty eight percent. So that gets us well beyond that consenting um. Land area to be considered that voluntary petition. We do have three non consenting properties. Um, consisting of just over four acres and then three point three one acres of right of way. So as you'll see in between the, the large blue tracks, there's this white chunk of ground that is. Terror Terrace Road right of way. So that doesn't count towards consenting or non consenting, but it's two acres of right of way that. We bring in with the um, with the petition. So for a total of forty, uh, just over forty acres included in this. I did want to make you aware in case anybody remembers back from two thousand thirteen. Uh, we do have an annexation agreement with the city of Cedar Rapids. And so, um, the map on the left of the screen, so you have area A, area B, area A, Cedar Rapids. Um, ability to annex that without question. Area B is Marion ability to annex. Um, and then area C is that little area where we just kind of said. Whoever wants it or gets to it first, because we're not, you know, it, it was kind of serviceability both ways. There was already existing infrastructure. Uh, and as you'll see on the map, on the left or on the right, you'll see Marion in the gray has annexed up. Uh, along Echo Hill Road uh, to the west of, of Albernout Road. And then Cedar Rapids in the green has annexed up along the east side of C Avenue up to Echo Hill Road. And then in the blue hatched area. That's the annexation area. So you'll see some of it is in area C. We've spoken with Cedar Rapids staff and it doesn't. It doesn't appear that there's any objection to, to annexing this property into the city of Marion. Um, something I would note, annexation provisions, as I've talked about before, is tenure transition on the taxes. And so that is something that the state does provide a breakdown of how much a, a maximum that the city could provide. And this is something we have done uh, in the past for existing residential properties. So. Um, you'll look at the properties, so the larger tract of land here. Uh, bare ground right now. So when that, if that would be annexed into the city and approved for development. Any of those new lots created do not get the tax transition with the way that the wording is in the resolution. Um, also, um, any established uses at the time of annexation would be allowed to continue. We call these legal non conforming uses. So. Um. Uh, any type of agricultural uses, any type of home occupations, those are allowed to continue, but not expand once um, annexed into the city. Any questions?
Questions?
So if someone on one of those properties had a shed that they were doing a business out of. That can continue under this.
Correct.
Can't expand. They couldn't put an addition onto the shed or make the shed bigger or something. I walk by this area all the time, so I, I have a visual of. Um, this, this kind of block and it's kind of a unique. Row. Um, so I was just kind of curious if.
If it's a, if it's a, an allowed use in Lynn County. And so there is a property out there that does have a home occupation for construction business. And so they've gotten that from the county. So if it's. Legal in the county, which we might not otherwise approve in the city, um, they would be allowed to continue that in the city, not expand. And for legal nonconforming uses, if they stop for a period of, I think, six months, then they're not allowed to pick that back up. We always give the example of somebody comes into town and they have five acres and they have ten horses. You know, and so they sell it and the next person can have ten horses as well, so long as they continue that use. But once it gets down to like one horse for, they only have one horse for five years, right? Little Betsy's still hanging on, you know? They don't get to have ten horses again and say, well, we had it. No, if you've lessened the use and you continue to let, you continue to have that lesser use. Um, for, for an extended, for an extended period of time.
And so if they sell that property, so if they sell it, that, that business, if somebody decided to take in, you know, they're on their own construction, they expand to. Into that space and they purchase that, that can continue until it is not acting. For a certain period of time as that business, whoever owns it.
Correct. So like an agricultural use, you know, they would continue to be able to use that property how it's being used. However, if at some point that use decreases. For over six months. So they're like, done, done with these horses for a year. We're going to take a break. You, you don't get a break. Um, right? That use goes away and your, your nonconforming status goes away too.
And just reiterating then, so this, the group that is wanting this came to us to want to. They came to us, the consenting group came in and wanted this annexation. That's how this came to exist?
Yes, I would say that there was um, one trigger application, I would say. Um, so the larger tracts of land. Owned by Fraser Land Development, Fraser Land Investments. Um, purchased the property requested to be annexed in. Ooh. Um, and with that, we had previous agreements with the properties listed here. Um, this was previously subdivided in the county. And when we do a county subdivision, we put in our memorandum of agreement. You'll annex at such time that we ask you to. Uh, because of its proximity to Marion. Um, when it shares a border, that's pretty common statement to have in there. And then also these properties in blue here subdivided in the county with that. Um, you know, it, 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 it enables us to make that full connection without creating that island situation.
That makes sense. You can't annex and create an island, so it allows. If you have eighty percent, it allows you to force the other twenty percent to come in. Okay.
Great, go ahead. Could, could you go forward one slide? Thank you. And I'm looking at the um. Looking at the map to the right. So with this annexation being completed. We have that un. Uh, but I guess it's in the county. Aren't, aren't we effectively? Um, creating an area that is isolated and in the county only?
Technically, no. Um, so the city of Marion, um, annexed in properties. Um, along, along our line, um, Cedar Rapids annexed in all but fifty foot. Along the south and the east sides of these properties. So there is a fifty foot gap. Of county jurisdiction. Appearing when you zoom out, what appears to be an island. When you zoom in enough, uh, the island goes away and um. You know, we don't have enough to eighty twenty, this area, uh, Meadow Knolls, as we refer to it, Meadow Knolls Road. Um, and, and the residential properties along it. And so we're trying to maximize our annexation opportunity with the, the Fraser request. Um, and so there is a fifty foot strip of county jurisdiction. Um, both on the north side of this property and then in between these properties. Because if, if Cedar Rapids would have annexed up, this whole area would have been considered an island.
Okay, so it, um, can you move the cursor uh, there? Just that, that area. What, who, who's the owner? Do you know?
Two larger tracts of land, um, Lori Klobek. And then there is a, I'm never quite sure how to say this. There's an, either an Esker or an Esker. That lives, that has a property and believe is eighty acres. And so Klobek owns the majority. Um, of the land mass uh, there. And then there's another eighty under a second ownership. And then there's roughly forty acres of a, a. Seventies or eighties county subdivision. And then you've got another couple, um, a handful of lots on the east side of Albernout Road. That are acre lots. And then there's two properties right in there. So you have a number of acre lots, but then two significant. Land owners there.
What, what would, what would be the trigger to that? Area of being annexed?
Um, I would, I would say a request from either Klobek herself. Or if she would to sell it to um, developer. That would be it. We don't actively pursue. Um, annexations other than North Ten Street. That was a. Um, that was a different.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Anyone else? Thank you, Kesha. Okay, that brings us to the end of the agenda. We do have a closed session on Thursday and we have a closed session this evening. So. Mr. Jensen?
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the closed session regarding a real estate transaction. As permitted under section twenty one point five one J of the Code of Iowa.
Second.
We moved in second it to adjourn the closed session regarding a real estate transaction. As permitted under the Code of Iowa. May we have the council's statement, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have reviewed the proposed subject matter for the closed session and find the same to be appropriate under Iowa Code, section twenty one point five one J.
Thank you. Uh, before we vote, any questions, comments? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes.
Mayor Abu Wasli?
Yes.
Mr. Brandt?
Yes.
Ms. Minter?
Yes.
Mr. Sternan?
Yes.
Hey, thank you everyone for joining us. We're adjourned to closed session.